Yat Ebbene, good morning everybody all across Facebook land. Here we are February 23 COVID-19 Town Hall update. Again, as we always do, always have a lot of data, real time information in which to pass along to you all. So without further ado, let us open up in prayer and then we'll pass it off to our President Jonathan Nez. So, Ahiya, the end God, Bohonihi God, we thank you Lord for another day of life. On this day Father, such a beautiful day out there Lord. Recent weather Lord has given us moisture and snow and for the land Lord that you blessed. Father, we thank you, we're thankful for that. We ask for your continued sustenance Lord Father for your people. As you've always done and performed miracles Lord before us and to us Lord. We continue to honor you and to press in Father, recognizing that the beauty of your creations is reminiscent and is indicative of the love, the great love you share for your creation, your people. So Father God, we thank you Lord that we can convene in a meeting here. We ask for your spirit of wisdom and knowledge and unity Father to permeate everything about this day, this meeting. Lord Father, may the people of the land be blessed upon receiving the news, the updates and Lord, may you continue to watch care over the great Navajo nation here Father. A nation which has established here as First Nations Father years and years and years ago, decades ago. Father, you placed us here for a reason. Father God, we are still here Father. We pray for your original intent to be known, to be made known Lord Father through your wisdom. Father, we thank you again, we can access your grace and your mercy Father consistently on a daily basis, if not on an hourly basis, we continue to look to you for all things. We thank you again, we give you this meeting to you Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen, amen. So, as I've said, we always open up with prayer and this February 23 Tuesday. Look forward to hearing from our President and all of our health professionals on what this pandemic, almost a year in, looks like now. We will give it to our President, we appreciate his leadership here. Ladies and gentlemen, President Jonathan Nez, the President of the Navajo Nation. Good morning sir, welcome to Town Hall.
Alright, good morning Vice President and good morning to everybody. Yat E, nihi di ni do lech kudochon Navah, Vice President Myron Lizer. Do kudo naxandalneshi gi, nihi naxandalnesh kudo azel indanlenigi do, atsiledeedanlenigi. So, eshi do kudo naxa, ahiye da bidi ni do lech, anoltschoh, arro, areet da nihi nalligi. Le bel e istsa lo do, benal le gynaro de, lisa e tynli de, shanall no. At a yahna nihi chekui la la, so, anoltschoh, jesi do, ahiye, e do, isinstsa no, do shanall. Aizola do, hot de, so, a la kho she, da nihi nall. A do she kudo Jonathan Nez da nihi shne, ja, shehinshlo. Tchakne sahne e basishchi, tchodichini da shechi do, tchakchi ni da shanala. A do, hane, nihi chekonde li, naaki jin da nishone do, di jin da nishone Nezna alchil. Di dukhosin sgaagi nahast eitsa da, melia gi e kudo bamda hui li. So, nihi kare ya, le, da nishide, de, nishide e kudo, an daal ya. Akhonde la she, an di le, naxandalneshigi do, nandalneshigi e, la aha gande. E ya, da ishtra do, aden talneshi di, internet da, egi sheyinache, benal nishidechne. So, eshi e onichperasindol lech, sheki do shina. A do e altschoh, le, nadalneshide, kadi, do e altschoh, yana krike, do nadalneshi. La aha gande, aha ra do nadalneshi, so, enichperasindol lech, shno, da shne sheki no. Arro, bamda hui li ne gi e ya, kho, na di, nahast e damiliyaj do, baan shla Nezna ti. Do baan shla ti, do baan tala, inelt e o, e kho, deskhae, benabikhe ya pachao. Azel inje e ya, adan nengi benach e di, di nela e peta tolna, benabikhe ya pachao. Azel inchodayol, inegi benabikhe ya pachao, e kunele. A do, yitzah, yitzah, ndawl degi do, di bitzado, da jutenegi nashnegi. E tala damiliyaj, tala Nezda di do baan, dis di do baan shla, inelt e o, e kho, nihi kei nihi dina. Yitzah, da jutenechon de, batso ta daltsan ashon de, kho, nihi kei nihi dina. E ya, aha jovba do, la e, a, an di, kho bikhe, e dahlza haod. Akhonde nihi e kudo batso de ilzeno, she e ya, i chedav kahod. Adi, biche do benetdastelligi akhonde, a koi chen she, ye dahli. Kho bikhe danlenigi akhonde, nihi e kudo e ya, bikhe dadet intol lech, do baadahui lian do lech, chiyan da biche kudal, kudalle. A do, biche hal, dahlne. A she an eh da bidi, no eh hot a e ya, elka edichat, di kho, bikhe danlenigi, biche do benetdastelligi. Beka edichat, shno, da shna, sheki ro shina. A do, di, dukhosin sgaagi nahast eitsa da, a ye go de de, skid. Le, kesmishiyajin da, do kesmish, do nahacha, biche, la she e ya, kho, nihi kei nihi dina. La lahtazni, jo nihi e kudo, arro, lahan dahtle, da di niya. Ebeni na e kudo, aha go de, hi jovba de, nihi la she e ya da, ze nihi cheku dahliya. A do, di dukhosin sgaagi nahast eitsa da, ze bikhe da nashigi e shingla, naxada isht, akhonde hadainolne. Nihi chingtoni, ze bikhe da isht, ki akhonde kha. A do, ah, ah, ninit, ah, arro, yirigolche, ndakha, ndakhae. A do, le, nihila do, tchadakhis, tcholowashpe, tcholowashpe. A do, di, aha gande, ndahan si, tchanhat nengi e do, ashon. Kudo naxandalneshigi tsaga haotsanje, nihi ke da dez, egi da naxandalneshigi jo e ya, abinalneshidechne. E do, la she e ya, la na nosan ya, cheh, nahashne, da del khalha, nohod. Di kui shein dez, kade aashon, di nihi Washington haz aja do, naxandalneshigi e, an dalneh do. A la she e ya da, an dahliya, la she e naaltsos. E, nihi cheku deshlih do, la na nosanegi, eh hot a sheka do, gwell, nosanegi jo kade e ya, kho nihi kei nihi dina. Naxandalneshigi kade benal nishidechne, sheki ro shina. A do, la aashon, ya ndeske di naalnegi dukhosin sgaagi. Jo, da da e ya, ashla tsa da, inelt e o, na di, di elhielke, tala che, inelt e o, e ya. A ashla tsa da de ya, peta tolna. Shan le, December enda, nilchetsoh do, yasilt es, izillenda, yolkalanenda. Ye go e ya, tala Nezna di naaki Nezna di, tala che, peta tolna, da di, nohod do bamda hui li. Da kare aashon, da na, nihi lhona e ya, ishla tsa da, inelt o, e ya, tala che, peta tolna. So, hadainolne do, nizunagoh e ya, nihi naalneshi dahli, sheki ro shina. A chut edol lech, a chut edol lech, sheki ro shina. Kudo meschodahl, e do, aha gande ndasot. A da dahliya do, jo kade, de skaznle go, nihi masa nihi cheninale do, bamda, bamdanotcha, ashon de. Akho, chisda biche kuda hlih chiyanda. Jo, arro, yirigolche, eiltiha, nengi jo, e shinchiyana gi, at, atlo de da. Biche kuda dohlih, chisje e ya, abeyaziniya, atlo de, jdo yeli, a de, khananeshi jdo lill. So, ebeni na e, ke da doh, e do, da dahliya sheki ro shina. Ya ndeske, akhonde, aashon de, a, a, a do, lahan dahtle, jo la she e azel hi cheku dahliya. Tala isht sind, hadainolne, a chodahl. Kudo na antyeneh, nihi cheku dahliya, e do, ben da nohtyen, sheki ro shina. So, o, ahiye, a sheilt, so, kudo, adnek echin hi chen hassi do lech, do, a she trash ne do lech.
Good morning everybody, we're gonna look at the updated information for the situation report that we received. Eli, if you could put up the new numbers there. The new numbers indicate since the start of the pandemic, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one of our Navajo citizens have contracted the virus. That's the total confirmed cases, those that utilize the healthcare facilities here on Navajo and are living here on the Navajo Nation. Of course, half our population live off the Navajo Nation. So, those numbers are not detailed in this report. But we just want to let you know, those healthcare facilities that some of our Navajo people utilize that live off the nation, those numbers will also be included in these updated reports. So, total recovered cases at this point, fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine have recovered and total deaths, one thousand one hundred and forty-five. And we update you on these numbers on a daily basis. We're coming on a one year soon. And what we want to do here on the Navajo Nation is do a memorial, candlelight vigil type of event, a ceremony, just to acknowledge and recognize and to also encourage our Navajo people to pray for the over one thousand one hundred and forty-five families who lost loved ones here on the Navajo Nation. And I'm sure there are many more throughout the world, we got Navajos everywhere. But we want to also pay our respects to those that have lost their lives to COVID-19. So, we'll be sharing that with you. Of course, it's not going to be a big gathering because of the COVID-19 CDC restrictions. But we will bring you live footage through this type of Facebook or YouTube venue later next month. And as you see the next, the next slide there, it just shows the progression of the virus. You know, starting from when it started in March, all the way and to May and then we went down. We haven't had these types of numbers since the, this past summer. So, if you look at right around August, September and October, we had some very low numbers. Yesterday, our twenty-four hour case count was fifteen positive cases. And you know, that's in twenty-four hours. So, that's pretty much a low for us in some time. And then you see, once we hit Labor Day, it skyrocketed all the way into the holiday season. And now we're, we're coming back down. And it is very difficult to keep numbers down once it takes off like that. And so, what we're doing here, I want to commend everyone for their hard work in staying with the protocol. Wearing your mask, social distancing, washing your hands with soap and water, hand sanitizer usage. And then also, also staying at home. So, we appreciate the hard work that you all are doing throughout this pandemic. And you know, now's the time to unite here on the Navajo Nation. And if you are not here on the Navajo Nation, you know, you have the opportunity to be that light within your community. Enough of this negativity, because the negativity also is a contributor to how you feel and also, you know, pushing back on, on the virus. So, you have to think positive thoughts and good thoughts. And you know, it also reflects on how you were raised. You know, the negativity that many people spew into the social media and the internet just shows how you were raised and you reflect, right? I mean, we grew up with this. Our parents would say that we as children, we don't just represent ourselves. We represent our parents, our grandparents and our ancestors. And so, maybe some have not been taught that. But I just wanted to share that with you, if you haven't been taught that, that it goes a long way to, you know, inspiring and encouraging your family and your community. Because what you say, you know, will reflect back on your family and your children. And if you're not careful, your children will emulate, imitate you into the, into the future. And then we wonder why our society is going in a different direction. What I'm saying here too is that we need to remind ourselves of our way of life teaching. Because that's what sustained us up to this point. And that's what's helped us get through COVID-19, this pandemic. So, you know, even those families that have lost loved ones, we reach out to them. You know, call them or just let them know that you're praying for them or you're just checking them up, checking up on them and encourage them and what they're doing. That'll go a long way in bettering the Navajo way of life here on our nation. And what we want to do is be the model in Indian country, right? And that's what we've been doing thus far. Showing people throughout the country, throughout the world, that you can push back on the virus if you put some big effort in utilizing our way of life teaching to get over some difficult times. That's the resilience that this, our people have, our ancestors have. And so, sometimes I talk a little, talk a little tough, right? I mean, in terms of tough love. But some of us grew up with some more tough love than what we're talking about today. And if it offends you, man, you know, if grandma were to get after you, that, that's extreme. But you know what, as you grow up and later in life, you realize, man, I needed that. I needed that tough love because it strengthens me, it strengthens a people to overcome some tough challenges in our life. And I thought I'd share that with you because it is not time for us to throw ourselves under the bus or get, or get back at one another. The fight is this virus. The fight is all these monsters that plague our people. Of cour, yeah, I understand, we don't have the, the resources available to take care of all the problems. But we as a people can help in pushing back on alcoholism, drug addiction, depression, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, COVID-19, because we are a resilient people. If you go to the next slide, Eli, there it shows you the phases that we're going through. And you can see that big red colored part of the slide there. That is phase zero. We've been in phase zero for, since early October. That's extreme numbers. But as you can see, February tenth, right around that, the far right side of the chart there, we're starting to go back down. Once we reach phase one for fourteen days, that's when our gating criteria will show that we're ready to start opening up more and more of our fist. We're doing, we're being very conservative on our reopen. I mean, we can, we can adopt CDC guidelines. And lately, the CDC guidelines have been becoming more lenient. But here on the Navajo Nation, our focus is the health and well-being of our Navajo people. That's of utmost importance, the safety of each and every one of you. I know people want to get back to normal, people want businesses to be fully open. The parks to be reopened, you know, it'll come. But we just got to sacrifice some more of our time and also tell our, our family members and the community members by working together, we can bring back these numbers down to the phase one, phase two. Our goal is phase three, that's the green. And we can do that and plus with the vaccinations that are happening on top of that, we can do it. We can do it. I know you've done an outstanding job, Navajo citizens, my relatives. And I know we can get through this, this pandemic. If you go to the next slide, it's a similar slide, but it's just from September to February tenth. It shows where in, from Labor Day, the, the numbers went up and the first shelter in place order was put in place for the second wave. You see Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's, high numbers and then the holiday bump. And I don't know if we have the data, but we're sure, we'll share that with you with the Super Bowl weekend numbers. And I think that's, that's not going to be too significant. I think we all were able to stay home and we appreciate everyone for their work on this pandemic. If you go to the next slide, this is the public health response. And if you look at the right around twelve o'clock, which is the top portion, contact tracing. We have contact tracers that are investigating these outbreaks. Many of these outbreaks are from family and social gatherings, probably all of it. And, and what they're doing is they need to make sure that people are isolated and quarantined so that they don't spread it within their family or in their household or the communities. Now, if you go to the, right around one thirty, look, look at it as a clock, right around one thirty. It says universal mask wearing, high quality mask. Where, again, we're encouraging people to wear your mask all the time. And we're even saying, wear another layer of mask. I, I wear the, one of the mask and then on top of that, I wear a cloth over that, the gators they call it. And you probably seen me out in public wearing that. You can wear, you can do, you can get a shirt, an old shirt to cover your mask or double, double layer it or a handkerchief, you know. We got these new variants coming out, which we don't Uh, we got these new variants coming out, which we don't know much about. But to us, the scientific community and the doctors and physicians have said that these uh vaccines are pushing back on the on these different variants. And so that's a good news. If you go to three o'clock, says social distancing and indoor uh ventilation. So we got to stay six feet apart, uh indoor ventilations. Now's the time to uh clean out your filters uh at your homes. Well, what what my grandma and my mom used to do and what I do now too is in the morning, I open up all the doors, I open up all the windows, let the cold air come in, yes. But it also helps uh get the um, the air uh cleaned. Uh, get all the old air out from the the night and let the the cooler air come in. So ventilation is is important to push back on the on the virus. Of course, avoid gatherings uh around the four thirty mark on the on the um chart there. Uh, social gatherings, uh I know that churches are wanting to come back into operation. We're we're looking at uh uh a process to do that. I know some churches are using the radio. Uh, people park outside, that's allowable. And the pastor speaks through uh the radio waves and people turn on the uh radio to a certain um frequency and they hear the pastors uh sermons. And also with the medicine, uh men who are doing their ceremonies, only five. And it's social gathering, there's product protocols in place. And so we got to continue to do that and also avoid, you know, family gatherings. Now's not the time, I mean, even if we got the shot, let's uh, let's not give in to uh what you see on the television. Some some communities and cities are reopening. And look at what happened when they did that last year. Man, it just skyrocketed. This virus is very, very contagious and we saw that happen. And once it goes up, it's hard to bring back the numbers now. Now we're at the all time low once again. Let's keep it there by doing what we've been doing for these past several weeks. The next uh circle there, right around the five uh, the five uh, five o'clock. Early identification of cases and support uh of effective isolation. So again, contact tracers, uh finding folks, making sure that they get isolated and quarantine as soon as possible and give them the information that they need to make an informed decision for themselves and for their community. So right around the seven PM mark there, protect healthcare workers. So we got to continue to protect our healthcare workers. Many of them have vaccinated, they've gotten their second dose, they're uh wearing their PPs at all time. We need them for the long run uh because we're not out of this pandemic yet. So let's uh, let's honor them and also uh keep them in our prayers. The next circle there, protect high risk population. Many of our elders have gotten vaccinated and uh we we thank the uh elderly for for taking the vaccine. Even our PHNs and C X Rs are going out to give the shots to our elderly's that can't uh get to the hospital. Uh, and so Moderna has been being used because it doesn't have to have that ultra cold uh storage. I heard recently that Pfizer may be um lessening that cold storage protocol as well. But we'll, we'll see uh what the CDC says on that. Then right around the nine, nine o'clock there, Navajo Nation COVID nineteen vaccination program. Vaccinate widely. Our goal, remember, our goal was a hundred thousand uh total doses by the end of February. Guess what, everyone? We reached that goal this past week, a hundred thousand. So with any goal, with any achievement that you've done, of course, you're going to have to do a new goal. And that new goal now is let's bump it up to a hundred and twenty thousand by the end of February. So I'll come back to that in a bit. And then right around the eleven o'clock genomic surveillance. And that's just uh uh evaluating these different variants that are out there. And we also have to find out if those variants are here on the Navajo Nation. It's all around us, but you have to do a special test for that. And so those uh special tests are are being considered and will be going through the chain for approval. And in my last uh slide there, if you go to the last slide, Eli, and I'll I'll end with this. Compared with the US and the Navajo Nation, the US total doses distributed seventy million fifty seven thousand and eight hundred total doses throughout this country. Uh, the total doses of those seven million that went into the arms is fifty two million eight hundred and eighty four thousand three hundred and fifty six. So the number of people receiving their second dose in the United States, fourteen million seventy seven thousand four hundred and forty uh people. And seventy five percent administered throughout this country. Now, look at Navajo Nation uh as of um. So if you look at the total doses distribute distributed, this, this was uh as of February eighteenth, so five days old. Uh, a hundred and thirty five thousand six hundred and eighty five uh doses have been allocated, given to the Navajo Nation. Uh, total doses that are administered, meaning how many of the one hundred and thirty five thousand plus went into the arms of our Navajo people? A hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and eleven. And that uh is as of uh February twenty first, two days ago. Those are two days, two days ago updated numbers. And number of people receiving their their second dose, twenty eight thousand nine hundred and sixty one. And that, again, that's as of February twenty first. Uh, the percent administered, eighty five point nine percent of what we received have gone into the arms of our Navajo people. So that's why I was saying a hundred thousand, we achieved that last week. Before the end of February, we have um a few days left in in the month of February. Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, five days to go. Uh, I think we will reach the one hundred and twenty thousand total shots given to the Navajo people. That's our new goal and I think we can achieve it by the end of this weekend. Uh, Sunday, I hear there's some slight snow uh that's coming in, but I I think most of it will be Saturday. Go to our Facebook, social media pages for a uh site near you. We're doing our very best to get all the healthcare facility um schedules and put them on to the uh Facebook page for your consideration. Uh, those of you that want a shot, check that out. Uh, and find one near you. I mean, some have gone far distance to get your shot, which is okay. But you just got to remember wherever you got your first dose, that's where you're going to have to go for your second dose. So it's really better to get a shot close by so you don't have to travel a very long distance. So overall, ladies and gentlemen, and uh that is uh my report. Uh, keep up the the great work that you all are doing, Navajo people. Thank you for honoring your public health professionals, your leaders throughout this pandemic. Uh, appreciate uh everyone involved. Dr. Jill Jim, who is going to be speaking uh today, the uh Navajo Area Indian Health Services with Area Director Roslin So, uh Loretta Christensen, Dr. Christensen, Dr. C, we call her. Uh, and um Captain uh Brian Johnson, uh Dr. Fowler, who's been great at translating for us. I know sometimes it gets difficult. Some of these terms are not in in Navajo yet. But we try to stay consistent and make sure that we utilize the same Navajo term that that we use on a daily basis so that it could uh, you know, be placed in our Navajo dictionary down the road uh where it's, if you want to call it politically correct. Um, so with that, uh thank you. And Vice President has been doing a an excellent job in doing the economic recovery uh work group and uh getting those long hours available on Saturdays and Sundays. So when you come to a vaccination site, you don't just go home and then come back Monday through Friday to go to get your necessities. You can do that on the weekend while you're already out, out of the household. So you know, those are things that we take into consideration with our our great team that we have here on the Navajo Nation, so. Vice President, turn it over to you. Thank you, guys. Take care. God bless you. God bless our nation.
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, um and you as well, sir. Thank you for your leadership and everything that you have done and are doing. Thank you, yeah. Uh, now I am the Vice President. Um, Komanche Mishlan, Tualhana, Basische, Do, Komanche, Dashi, Che, Kashi, Dashi, Nell. It's good to be with you all this morning. And this is the February twenty third version of the COVID nineteen Town Hall update. We appreciate our president's leadership in this fight against this this virus. And um real shortly, we'll be hearing from our health professionals. And uh I'll be introducing Dr. Jill Jim here uh shortly for her updates. And so we appreciate all of their leadership and everything that they all are doing, the commitment, the dedication to the excellence of seeing the vaccination plan roll out the way it did, right? And beating our goal, testing those numbers and setting new goals. And so we should all uh be doing that. How can we become better uh, you know, in this pandemic? So um earlier, we, President and I, early on, a year ago, were talking about if we got to be, you know, sequestered, if we got to isolate, we got to be away from uh the normal, I guess, way of of life that we should become the better for. And so certainly, this year has played out that way. Those of us who are still, you know, are working hard to mitigate this threat, constant threat that we see COVID nineteen pandemic has played out on our Indian uh reservation here, the Navajo Nation, so. Um, but in that, as I may appreciate President's uh leadership and his guidance in that. And today's flavor of the day was uh let's be positive, right? Not COVID positive, let's be positive minded in everything that we do fighting this virus. So appreciate his words and his uh, his teaching, I can't. Um, but uh real quick, as we um, as I always do, not wanting to be redundant because we'll hear a lot of information uh from our health professionals and certainly uh not wanting to go over anything that our president has says. But still maintaining a a great message that our people, you know, need to hear and that we need to regard. So uh twist it up a little bit, not wanting to steal anybody's thunder. Uh, you'll hear numbers from our health professionals here on uh what this pandemic looks like uh on the Navajo Nation. I'll take us a step out and look at the surrounding areas, uh New Mexico, Arizona and Utah. And what does this virus look like? What is the trend? So again, I'll just uh give you some real quick numbers. Uh, since last March, total positive cases in Arizona, eight hundred and ten thousand six hundred and fifty eight. Huge number. Uh, new cases, uh one thousand one hundred and eighty four. Uh, a few months ago, we'd seen cases into uh the five digits, you know, uh ten thousand, twelve thousand new positive cases in the last surge. So numbers are definitely looking better um on the downtrend, which is what we want to see and what our health professionals like to see. So um again, remaining positive, I won't mention the number of deaths here. Uh, dipping a deeper drill down on Arizona, Apache County. Total positive cases, ten thousand three hundred and twenty eight. Uh, new cases, forty seven within Apache County. Uh, Navajo County, fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety five with uh new cases at eighteen. So great number there, let's continue to bring that down. Coconino County rounding out our tri-county area that the Navajo Nation uh touches, sixteen thousand two hundred and ninety eight with um seventeen new cases. So again, numbers continue to look very, very great. Uh, New Mexico, one hundred and eighty three thousand and twenty three positive cases in this uh last past year with um new cases at two hundred and thirty seven statewide. San Juan County, New Mexico, northwest corner and northeast corner of the Navajo Nation, uh Northern Agency. Um, thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty three total positive cases with um eleven new cases, so great numbers. Uh, Gallup McKinley County, our west, our eastern neighbor here. Um, eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty one with four new cases. So tremendous numbers here from where we've been, from where we've been, so great. Keep it up. Utah, rounding out our three states, three hundred and sixty seven thousand and seventy three with um three hundred and thirty eight new cases. This is the lowest number that this has been since September night um last year. So five, six months ago, we've had, you know, this is the lowest number. So definitely uh on the downward trend, praise the Lord. Thank you, Jesus. San Juan County in Utah, one thousand seven hundred and ninety six positive cases. Um, I don't have a number on new cases, so um, but but there you have. And um on the Navajo Nation portion of southeastern Utah, one thousand and fifty five positive cases since last March. So uh that area, sparsely pop sparse population, obviously, but still, um, you know, um, as the pandemic, as the virus has spread all across the United States here, it has touched all of these uh areas here. So appreciate those numbers from uh my staff, Adam Bagay, and uh appreciate those for updating it. And so um lastly, just want to encourage, as our president has shared, you know, um, being positive and um without being uh too critical. You know, again, we're all in this together. It'd be great if it could all rise. They say, you know, in a harbor, when high tide comes in, every boat rises. So I guess when this virus uh came on our land, everyone was affected in one way or another, some more so than others. So what a great vital message to hearken to, Shidinah, all of you out there to uh be that um, that friendly face, that um just uh, just this part right here, right? Be that friendly, friendly face that will um, you know, encourage those of you in the lives that you touch. You are influential in your own sphere, your own realm of where you live in your community. So be a sage of of being positive, you know, we can. Turn it around in a day, become more, I guess, uh enlightened and enlightened. First, we must be enlightened and then we can enlighten somebody else, right? So but in keeping with uh the message and the um um exhortation that our president uh just a few minutes ago has has led. Um, usually I try to pick up on um some of the messaging that our president gives. Again, you know, you can only give so much information and the rest is all seems redundant, numbers, virus, risk mitigation, all these things and you know, the same constant messaging. But here at the upper levels of leadership and the highest and second highest offices in our Navajo Nation, um, we still have the great need to uh get a a strong um coordinated and um unified message for for our people. And that's what we've been about this whole year. And um, you know, through the course of time, we've gone through the ebb and flow. You know, we get total buy-in and then you get pushed back and then you're recreating and tailoring our messaging to affect all. You're trying to affect all of the people, right? You don't want to leave no one behind and yet because of uh the inclination of those out there to, you know, again, uh create dissension, disunity, disrupt, yeah, because they're out there, you know, get it? Not everybody, not all on the same wavelength, so to speak. But uh uh by and large, you know, to bring the greatest effect to the greatest number of people is what we've always been and it's all been positive. It's all been with art and their people in mind. How do you uh? It's all been with art and their people in mind. How do you, uh, uh, bring a, a true central consolidated message based on facts, based on, you know, uh, hope, and then based on, uh, being positive. And, uh, leadership exemplified at the highest levels is, uh, gotta be, uh, exaggerated almost. I don't mean twisting the truth, far from that. You're being as truthful as possible, as transparent as possible. And, and when you do so, sometimes that gets ridiculed. Some people take umbrage with that and choose to not play nice. And so, but ours has always been about the people, for the people, by the people. And so we continue to hearken, uh, to our citizens all across the land to be positive and to, uh, continue to, to dispel hope. I saw somewhere, somewhere along the way, um, become a hope dealer, right? That's a positive message on being a dealer, right? I mean, the other, uh, connotation here is, you know, dealing illegal substances and stuff like that, you know, doing things illegally. But let's all be a hope dealer, right? Everybody can be a hope dealer. You know, pedal hope. So, anybody want to see my hope? I got hope for sale, hope for sale. Anyway, I'm, I'm being facetious, but I'm also being positive. But let's, let's, uh, be hope dealers there. I saw an acronym out there. Hope, H-O-P-E. If I had a dry erase board, turn my camera around. Hope. Have only positive expectations. Shidinah. Again, um, President sends out a message. As the Vice President, I support my president. I appreciate his leadership, and I craft a message along the same realm as him to the people. That's what Nez Lizer does. That's what an administration does. Is, uh, the president, uh, leads and the Vice President supports and leads in his own right. And so, hope. Have only positive expectations, shidinah, all across the land. And also, think before you speak. Amen? I mean, these are all lessons we all learned from our parents, our grandparents, our elders, right? Think before you speak. Let me turn it around. Before you speak, think, and there's an acronym as well. Think. True, helpful, inspiring, necessary, and kind. Think. Is it true? Is it helpful? Is it inspiring? Is it necessary? And is it kind? And so when you hear something and regurgitate it and resend it back out again, think. Is it true? Is it helpful? Is it inspiring? Is it necessary? Is it kind? Kind of like what my mom used to say. You don't have nothing nice to say, don't say it at all. So, that's been kind of the theme of our day here. Uh, again, I'm only following, uh, our president's lead here. But, uh, we want to give feelings of hope out there and to send messages of hope out there. But if our people have been feeling hopeless, uh, wanting to give up, right? Some of us have been in that. A positive message, this too shall pass. Amen. Keep coming back. Keep coming back stronger. You, you know, a setback is just a setup for a comeback, right? I mean, I could go on and on. This is in my realm. I love to be positive. Positive mental attitude, attitude, PMA, right? I mean, I could do this all day. So, feelings of hopelessness and wanting to give up, it's just a setup for a comeback. So, again, with strong effort, president's always had a message of being resilient. Let's be resilient, just like our elders, right? Ah, watch it. Ego, if it is to be, it's up to me. It's up to us, shidinah. And so, um, earlier, before I got on, I mentioned a crucible of this pandemic. What did we learn? What did this experience teach us about ourselves? I don't know. You all can answer that. How did we become better through this pandemic? How did we become better parents, better children, better uncles and aunties? How did we become better spouses, better employees and employers? How did we do all these things? The crucible of this pandemic will be revealed as we exit this pandemic. What did we learn? How can we be the better for it? And so, Nez Lizer administration has been developing new guidance on the next stage of, uh, economic recovery. What is it going to look like? Um, as more vaccinations get into the arms of our people, to the tune of, again, our goal, a hundred and twenty thousand, right? We just bested our last goal, one hundred thousand, and, uh, I appreciate our president's leadership. You all followed suit. Some of us had re- reservations, right? Through time and prayer, we felt the release and the peace of God, our Creator, who, again, spoke, and some of you all got your, uh, your vaccine based on prayer, based on seeking God in this. And some of you all are still, I don't know, right? And so, so we go on, again, without judging, without placing ridicule, just being positive, right? Again, be a hope dealer. Deal hope, pedal hope, you know, get hope out there, let it become contagious, just like this virus, uh, used to be contagious. We'll call it what it is, right? Used to be, and speak it into existence, right? And so, uh, someday, real soon, the virus will be gone, and we'll be, um, um, hopefully not desiring to get back to the way things used to be, right? Again, the crucible of this pandemic, what did it teach us? To become better citizens, to love one another. It's not about the left or right, conservative liberalism, Republican, Democrat. We all live and breathe the same. We all have red blood in our veins. We all have the love and know how to respond to love. We all desire love, right? We all, we all eat and drink. We all put our pants on the same way. We all, we all, we all. So, message has really been about just being as positive as can be. What did we learn? What did this experience teach us about ourselves? So, without further ado, um, I'm grateful to all of you, shidinah, all across. Thank you for your partnership in this and your cooperation during these trying times. By continuing to follow the data and the recommendations of public health officials who all have a esteemed cast real shortly here, following me and President, we can continue to move forward safely and responsibly together. So, ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, I'd like to, uh, bring on our own Dr. Jill Jim, our Executive Director of Navajo Department of Health, where she's going to give her updates, and we appreciate her leadership. You know, who would have thought? I think, uh, Dr. Jim, when you signed on to, uh, uh, work with the Nez Lizer administration, who would have thought you'd be dealing with what you're dealing with, right? And, uh, we're all in that boat, and yet we prayed, President and I, we prayed for every one of our, our, our cabinet members. And so you're right where you're supposed to be, Dr. Jim. So we appreciate your leaderships. Thank you. God bless you, and, um, appreciate, again, uh, your, your, your guidance in this. So, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim, uh, Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. Take it away, Dr. Jim. Shalom.
Yes, thank you, um, Vice President. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Uh-huh. Well, thank you for that. And, um, yes, I don't think we all expected this over a year ago, and we're all living through this pandemic. It's something I think we will never forget, but I know that there's a lot that we've learned. Um, there's also a lot of, um, collaboration and partnerships that we're working on in responding to an entire emergency where you can't really feel or see, um, sort of a disease, um, that's invisible in some way through only droplets, that we have to, um, prevent this sort of infectious disease. And it's been quite, um, the experience. I think over a year ago, we were um, introduced to this new disease that really, um, had its name as coronavirus that became COVID- nineteen. And then individuals were like, well, what is the taxonomy name of this? What is the official name? A lot of those things were still being created early on when trying to identify what this disease is capable of. And I think very quickly, um, it really spread from one, um, globe, um, to another globe as well, I mean, to the United States as well. So I think that's been the interesting part of this is the ability for this disease to, um, to move around, and that's what we're seeing in these new variants. There are cross, um, starting, um, the identification in new variants in South Africa, Brazil, and UK, and even at times, we're faced with identifying new different mutations and homegrown variants here on the nation. And um, it's a very, um, developing, um, I guess, disease. And we are using the tools that we have at our hand, um, not here on the, only on the Navajo Nation, but with the United States. There's scientists working and dedicating their lives to researching how to stop this disease. But it seems like every time we find ways to say this vaccine is going to, um, prevent this, there's new angles that we're faced with. So, but the message always continues, and I think that's what President Nez and yourself, Vice President, have reiterated time and time again with the same preventive messaging. That's the only thing that we have at our tool. So, I just want to thank you guys for your leadership too, and continuing to, um, share your thoughts as well, and your, um, encouragement of then for the Navajo people to continue to stay vigilant. So, I hope you guys can see my screen, and that might be the wrong screen, so let me pull up the right screen here. And I can share it, the PowerPoint slide. So can you guys see the PowerPoint slide here? So, with the messaging that we always just want to reiterate is that, um, they're not really dependent on or any variant. Um, the preventive mentions and messages are continuing to be the same, which is wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands, cleaning and disinfecting. Um, and it's no time to let down too, because I think there are, just because you got vaccinated, doesn't mean that we should, and we should stop any of these prevention messages, because it has shown that, um, certain communities or cities or states that contain, continue to practice these mask-wearing indoors or in public, still have a lower transmission rate. So I would say, um, please continue these practices. And first, I think we were hearing advice by December, we'll have some sort of normalcy. And then we got new information from Dr. Fauci and others that maybe till two twenty-two, we need to keep wearing masks and doing these preventive measures. So recommendations are always changing. Um, and it's unfortunate that we're always going to have to be on some sort of defense to protect ourselves. And that's the reality of this, the rarely unknown of this disease. So, and then this leads to even new recommendations recently to wear um, two masks or a well-fitted mask is very important. So, and then wearing it properly is very important too. Make sure it's not under your nose, or making sure there's no leakages um, on the side or on top, and making sure that, um, even with your cloth mask, and there's, there are multiple layers um, as well. So wearing a properly, uh, fitted mask is very important. And so, one mask, uh, may not cut it, um, especially if it's just a disposable mask. And I hope people are adjusting to that as well. And then also, the signs and symptoms of this COVID is, um, similar to some people that might have allergies or regular flu. So, always know that, um,
Antoinette. He got Marie Curie mixed up with Mary Antoinette when he was asked for the neighbors.
Um, okay. Um, so that's why I want to just go ahead and, um, just remind all the listeners that um, we are still, um, en- encouraging the sign and symptoms of every, um, to being familiar with that. Such as coughing, um, shortness of breath, muscle aches, fatigue, diarrhea, fever, sore throat, new loss of taste or smell, congestion or rainy nose, nausea or vomiting. And then also understand that it takes two to fourteen days for some symptoms to develop. And so, being aware of the signs and symptoms is very important. And then the next thing is avoiding large gatherings as well. Continue to, um, avoid large gatherings. Um, even though you got vaccinated, there's still that, um, ability to not know, and the unknown is what we all need to be prepared for. And then we also have, um, individuals still receiving either their hardship paychecks or either the federal stimulus funding. So it's important to avoid large gatherings at banks, post offices, or stores. Maintain your six feet distancing. Double mask. Try to go when there's, um, not a large crowd as well. So continue to do that. Also, when, um, individuals have tested positive, I know there's some patients they may experiencing from others that might cause depression or anxiety. Um, we are grateful that we still have some isolation and quarantine that are open, um, with a few patients on to the city and Tinley. Um, and we do hear that, um, sometimes family members are not willing to work with them, or they don't have the space for them to um, safely isolate. And when they come over to receive isolation and quarantine services, they're very thankful for that. Um, as well. So just know that, um, we all need to stay Navajo strong. By making sure we don't shame others is very important, not only for our own individual health, but um, the individuals that have tested positive as well. And also, there's a lot of people that are back to work for a couple of weeks, and I just encourage everyone to make sure they don't come to work sick, even though they might think it's a flu or allergies. And then continue all the safety precautions and report any, um, incidents or expo- exposures on the Navajo Department of Health webpage. There's a report exposure button in the last public health order. Um, I think the last two, we talked about encouraging businesses to report their exposure so that we have a better idea on how to control, um, any exposure. So it's very important that we monitor these so that we know people can safely go to the grocery store, they can safely go to the bank, they can safely go to, um, food establishments. So reporting any exposure as a customer or an employee, um, or an, a manager at the stores is, uh, very important. So, and the vaccine is here. Uh, we do understand that, um, the lines or access to vaccine events have have kind of, um, decreased. But what we want to encourage our community members and Navajo citizens is to even just, if you got vaccinated and you're in the phase one B, um, as an essential worker or an elder or high-risk patient. If you know anyone in the community that you know that fits those categories, but maybe they're not getting help, or either they, um, don't know that, that they can get a vaccine, um, share that information with them and let them know. And we can all do our part by informing and educating people that we know might have been left behind with getting a vaccine, even though, um, they are an older person, or either they are high-risk. And sometimes it's very, um, difficult to navigate our healthcare system, because, um, before the pandemic, I think we always use different hospitals, and sometimes we might not have a primary care provider in some cases. So, just sit and see if we can encourage, um, just to identify people, your neighbors, your relatives, and, um, your, your community is what you know, and um, that will help us a lot in getting people access to vaccines. So, um, that would need to be a new message that I encourage everyone to do. Also, when you do get your vaccine, you're not fully immune. So also, take the precautions that I indicated. That doesn't mean you should throw off your mask one day after you get vaccinated. And then, um, that's what we're hearing. We are hearing that because people that are getting vaccinated, um, may be taking their defense and guards off. And we don't want that. We want to still have everyone, uh, maintain these, um, behaviors that help reduce the transmission of COVID. So, as I talked about the new variants, um, we have not identified any new variants here on the reservation, but they have been identified in all three states in Colorado, um, Utah, um, New Mexico, and Arizona. So, it's here. Um, and the behavior of that could be different, but we just want everyone to know that, um, take all the precautions that you need to. Um, it has a different characteristic, and we just all need to be aware that they're not only, um, out It has a different characteristic and we just all need to be aware that they're not only out internationally now. It's been identified here in the United States and all the epidemiologists and surveillance by CDC and others are keeping an eye on that. So any small peak of some of these variants in some communities or states is going to be a red flag. So we all need to keep an eye on what that really means. We hope it doesn't happen, but we also know that it's possible. And so sharing this information and talking about COVID, I'm glad you guys join us and every other day to listen. But I hope we're all taking care of ourselves to relieve stress and maintain mental wellness. And today, if you haven't, find a way to take care of your emotional health today. Either sort of take a break to watch TV, read a book, the newspaper, listen to the news and social media. Maybe for positive things, maybe something other than COVID. If you want to give a break to yourself, also exercise. If you have time to exercise today, take 15 minutes to take a small walk or do something to bring your heart rate up. As well as cleaning or other things, you can also eat healthy. Find ways to eat and make choices today by keeping your plate green and colorful, by adding vegetables, fresh vegetables, if you can find some. And also get plenty of sleep, avoid alcohol use and drugs and make time to unwind and do other, other activities with your family. Talk with other individuals, maybe about your frustrations or just maybe to catch up because it is good to talk to other individuals. Especially if we can't see each other in person and that can be done by phone, email or social media. So I just want to encourage everyone to take care of yourself and the safest place is at home to stop the spread. So I just want to encourage everyone to do that. So thank you very much for joining our town hall this afternoon. And I know that our partner here and we work with the Navajo Area Indian Health Service every day. And so I'm going to hand it over to Captain Johnson and look forward to his presentation. So here you go, Captain Johnson, thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Jim and President Nez and Vice President Lizer. It's certainly nice to be back here and thank you for the information shared this morning. I know it's been a long journey over the last year and I feel that these Facebook sessions do provide timely information. And while some of it may be repetitive, I do think that that's important, that we continue to be consistent in our messaging. And so we really appreciate the partnership and leadership throughout this pandemic. Again, my name is Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. And I've worked here on Navajo since 2005 in various capacities. And just want to say thank you to the Navajo people for the opportunity to work here. I've really enjoyed meeting and knowing many of you and appreciate the friendship and just the sharing of information over the years. But I would just like to say and to the general public in regards to our conversation on COVID-19. That yes, it has been a, a long journey as we've mentioned. And we've gone through two major waves of outbreaks, I guess, increased cases here on the Navajo Nation. And we've, we've made it through and we know that there have been some significant impacts here. And we certainly acknowledge that. And just in, in commenting on this, I do, I oftentimes try to remember just how important it is to express my sympathies, my condolences to the Navajo people who have lost friends, family members. I know it's been just devastating and we do keep the Navajo people in our prayers. And, and we thank you for, for just doing everything that you've done, the general public has done on Navajo. I feel that it has been a remarkable response by the Navajo people across the board. And we've, I know it's easy for us to get on Facebook and maybe send messages of, of here's what to do and not to do. But it really takes the participation and we try to, we try to base our information as best as possible on science and what we know about these diseases. So we, again, we do appreciate everything the public's doing and we thank those individuals within extended families on Navajo Nation. I think that's some of the most important sharing of information is through the extended families and making sure that people are hearing the message. If not here, through the news media or through other types of media and information sources. Again, it can be tricky in these, in a pandemic such as this because there are so many sources of information. And unfortunately misinformation does enter in, sometimes inaccurate information. And so as always, we certainly recommend making sure that any information that you're looking to the, the world wide web or the internet. That, that you look to a reputable site such as the Centers for Disease Control and, and other known organizations that are true public health based entities. So I've oftentimes said on this particular session that, that we continue working within the healthcare system. And we all know that here on Navajo Nation, we, we do have some sites that are federally managed and some sites that are tribal health organization managed. And that's fine. It makes up our healthcare system here on the Navajo Nation. And the goal is to continue serving the Navajo people and to do that to the best of our ability and try to improve our quality of care that we provide here. You know, throughout this pandemic, we've not only, of course, looked inward at what we're doing within our hospitals and our health centers. But we've also partnered with, with many organizations that I've been quite impressed with in terms of their caring nature. The way that they were very responsive and very interested in the Navajo people and serving the Navajo people. And for example, we've worked with the Veterans Administration and we've strengthened our relationships and how we can better work together in these types of situations. And that, that will likely lead to additional positive outcomes in the future in terms of how we can, how our healthcare systems can tie into the VA. And, and just again, improve our quality of care. Also, we've been very fortunate. We know that during the pandemic, we had a number of staff, unfortunately, employees who also became ill. And it became apparent that we did need some support working in a rural area. Rural healthcare can be challenging in terms of finding the appropriate individuals who need to be in various positions such as doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists and others within the hospital healthcare setting. And so we looked broadly and was able to, to work with the Department of Defense. And, and this is the first time, at least in my career and working with Indian Health Service, that we really had a really nice partnership and we've continued to work together. So it's been many months now that Department of Defense through the Army and Navy have had nurse teams, support teams, critical care teams on the ground here at Navajo Nation and at various locations. Some of those locations include Tubus City, Chinley, Gallup Indian Medical Center and Northern Navajo Medical Center in Shepraw. So these teams have done, have performed just amazingly well. We've been very impressed with their professionalism and just the way that they were able to come in and, and just fit right in and immediately start helping and making a difference in, in the lives of many here on the Navajo Nation. And we do appreciate that. So, so our, you know, the point being that, that our healthcare system has maintained itself, has sustained throughout this pandemic. And yes, we've called upon partners to assist. And we've had, as I mentioned with the Veterans Administration, the Department of Defense. We've also called upon Team Rubicon and other volunteer organizations throughout this pandemic that have lent us support. And, and we've just been very appreciative of it. And sometimes in these situations, of course, we have to be innovative and creative and think of new ways of how we approach business. And, and we've done that. And in my mind, healthcare is the most important business out there. We, we, we have to do the right thing to, to provide for our customers. So we continue as a healthcare organization to really focus on several things. But in terms of COVID-19 vaccine and vaccinations, we continue to really focus on how, how we can get the vaccine out and making sure that we do that in a very methodical way to our, to our whole public. To our Navajo public and making sure that we schedule accordingly and get those schedules out. And it's, it's a little, it's not straightforward in terms of how the vaccination or vaccine process works. We do get shipments from various locations around the United States of vaccine as it's produced and manufactured. And it makes its way to the Navajo Nation. Some of that vaccine is shipped directly to our healthcare sites. And in some cases it's shipped to one central location and then we end up delivering that, working with all of our healthcare partners around the Navajo Nation. So some in the general public may be asking the question, it seems like the schedule changes and it's a bit challenging to, to know exactly when. And when a vaccine, vaccination clinic is going to be taking place in your area. And what I just want to point out is that, yes, it is challenging for all of us. And, and that typically on every Sunday, we do receive information about shipments that should be coming to our location. And ideally those shipments will arrive on Mondays. But in some cases, as it has in the last couple of weeks, we've had weather delays getting the vaccine here as well as other shipping delays that have happened. And so we've experienced that on occasion and we're just, we, we have to remain flexible, we have to remain patient. And I know on our side, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we're doing what we can to update everyone and make sure folks are aware of, of these changes that have to take place. So doing the best we can and want to make sure that people understand some of the challenges we face there as well. We also are continuing to do our, 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 our testing at our facilities as well. And I know that at this point, the number of tests for COVID-19 have gone down quite dramatically. But we are looking to continue keeping our testing up. It's important that we understand within our communities, are we still seeing positive cases? Are we, are we declining in those? Are we seeing mostly negative cases or testing results at this point? And we do look at those percentages to help drive decision-making within our healthcare system. And one of our primary goals is to get the positivity rate, you know, down below five, five percent or below if at all possible. And so we're working diligently and again, continuing to communicate with the public about the importance of continuing those prevention techniques that we talk about. And I'll, I'll mention those here in a moment as well. But yes, so for vaccination and COVID, COVID-19 vaccination and COVID-19 testing. These continue to be very much priorities for our healthcare system across Navajo area and the Navajo Nation. And we continue to have daily, weekly meetings, conference calls with all of our partners. Dr. Jim oftentimes is, is leading those from the Navajo Department of Health and just making sure that that information is getting spread around the Navajo Nation. And again, I know that President Nez did mention the numbers, but I want to go back and just reemphasize. You know, we started, of course, with zero vaccinations, just, just what seems to be a few weeks ago. And at this juncture, we're over 116,000 vaccinations that have been provided here on the Navajo Nation. And that would not have happened without the, the dedicated public just reaching out, very interested in the vaccines. And we thank you for that. We thank you for working with us and, and keeping your patience as we get through these vaccination clinics. And we'll continue to do that. We, we do have a schedule, a schedule put out. And it does get posted on the, on the Office of President and Vice President on their Facebook and is also sent out, I know through the Navajo Nation as well, through other means. And we will continue at all of our service units to hold the COVID-19 vaccination, both mass vaccinations, which some of you may have attended and may be set in long car lines, vehicle lines as you waited, but was patient enough to do that. And you thought it important enough to do that. And again, we appreciate that. We're going to continue with those and we're also at each location, you know, standing up and have stood up. Vaccination clinics within our health facilities as well when, as appropriate. So we encourage you to look for the schedule, schedules out there and to also make sure, don't, don't hesitate to call if you have questions about the time of an event, the location of, of, of an event. We want to make sure that we're getting you the correct information. And my recommendation is to contact your, your local health facility that you normally visit in order to make sure you're getting the most updated, accurate information. The, the schedules, the vaccine schedules are subject to change. Again, as I mentioned about as we get new vaccine shipments coming in, sometimes those can be delayed, sometimes they're on time. I, I know that everyone's trying really hard to make sure the vaccines are on time, but things do happen. And, and we'll try to make sure that we, of course, get that vaccine out as quick as we can to you and your families. And we just want to remind folks that, you know, vaccination, the COVID-19 vaccine is the safe. Is the most effective and yourself, your family and your community safe from COVID-19. That, and we continue at this moment with Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines. And while we do anticipate there will be additional vaccine manufacturers that will be, receive emergency use authorization just as Pfizer and Moderna has received. And when that happens, we'll certainly participate and utilize those products as appropriate. I also, I know that Dr. Jim touched upon the variants of the, of the COVID-19 virus. And I just want to also say, you know, to the public that yes, we are, we are very aware that these, the changes in the virus can happen. Basically, you know, you might hear it referred to as a mutation. You might hear it called a variant of the virus. And basically it's just the virus itself making its own changes as time moves forward. It's looking at a way to survive just as we humans look for a way to survive. A virus also looks for ways that it can survive in this world. And it's not unusual for a virus to go through these changes or mutations. There's, there's other viruses that this is seen in and it's typical of viruses. And in this case, we do know, as Dr. Jim reported, that in our surrounding states, we, we do know that there have been some cases of these variants or these mutations that have been identified. And so that's why it's so important that we stay on top of this and work with national public health officials with Centers for Disease Control. national public health officials, with Centers for Disease Control and state laboratories and state, state and tribal public health programs to make sure that we're monitoring what we're seeing on a national basis because we want to make sure that we have the most updated information for you during these types of conversations or in other types of conversations regarding COVID-19. Scientists and laboratories around the United States are receiving samples of COVID-19 tests to, to check for those variants and those mutations to see is it what we first encountered here on, on Navajo Nation or is it something else that's developing at this point? And so that will continue to, to happen over the days, the weeks and the months to come. So we'll continue to share that information as we receive it. The, the last thing that I want to, the last couple of things I want to mention is just to remind people that, again, although we know that the vaccine is the safest, the most effective way to help prevent the continued spread or transmission of COVID-19. We know that we still have to do those basic, uh, uh, social items of, of watching our distance from one another, keeping a different, a, a distance, a healthy distance outside of your family members, your immediate family members, those living in your home. I, I've given the story a couple of times now that, you know, I was in Gallup a couple of weeks, this, these past weeks, and I've continued to see at retail stores and such, individuals being right next to each other who are, who are not from the same families. This is concerning in that I feel like people are letting their guard down possibly to protect themselves against the virus. We still need to respect that six feet distance separation. Whether it's in a grocery store, other retail stores, business offices, making sure that we're still respecting that. We still need to be wearing our masks and there are many that are recommending double masks at this time, given the new variants that are, that are being found. And that the fact that the, some of the new variants are more highly infectious than, than the former virus that we have been dealing with. So masking is being recommended. And of course, washing our hands and washing our hands should always be something that we do no matter what. So I think we're all doing probably a good job at that. Just need to keep that up with alcohol sanitizers and/or good old fashioned soap and water. Also, it was mentioned to still avoid large groups. I, I do hear of a number of individuals traveling to the large metropolitan areas in the region. And that does give an opportunity to, you know, bring something back. So I, I still recommend limiting in terms of large groups of individuals, exposure to large groups of individuals. And so just, we just need to remain smart and remain vigilant. Again, it's been a long, it's been a long journey. And we know that now we're in this period of the year where we're transitioning from winter to spring. And we know that now this will give us an opportunity to get outdoors. It's a beautiful day out there today. Being able to take some time, go out and get some fresh air does a lot for mental health and just physical health as well. Being able to take a walk and exercise. So we really, really should, I highly recommend taking advantage of that, getting outside, getting some vitamin D from the sunlight. It's, it's very helpful. We get outdoors and, and take advantage of this beautiful weather. So I think I'll stop there and I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Fowler, one of the nicest people I know here in the Navajo Nation. And Dr. Fowler, it's, it's over to you.
Thank you, Captain Johnson. Nishni. Akadi. Akwande. Akwande. Akadi. Akwino. Eh do ba akwaliya. Ah do asus aziro do. Ah do kwa don dahui. Hada jit. Ah do di kwa do. O sa kwa do ya at eh be. Natahiz kui do sani. Jaxi kwa de ney gali do. Ah do haza do ya at eh be. Nencho neh nikaya. Eji ah ilne kwa do. Ncholo insenha positive. Nas go. Akwande. Ah do nikido. Ah do haxine lae oltao do nesenda. Akwande jo amado. Ah do di nakhalchinen leni. Di kana kedemo. Amajano ama yajijano. Ilchin e do. Ilchin e do di. Hala alchinigi eh di. Ah do olchin echa ishi. Eh do ziti et eh do be. Hala axi ninakalchena oyu. Di kada. Eh hosin. Ah jix eh huit. Jo eh ilchinlini. Olta go ndadeski. Shoshi yajishe awedi. Hot eh go be. Jo hot ah ilchin e hot ah na. Na na nishgo. Eh ben na eh di kwa Navajo Nation Transit System. Ay haxine tlae eh be. Di behes ani dan leni do safety measures. Ah do di kushidne. La xene ah do da. Akwande. Di hot ah beso. Ah do kwa beso shaniket. Onle kwo jo. Jo di ojita. Ben hiln tahui. Akwande. Hasyo. Haxine lale. Hasyo.